He didn't say anything yet, right? I'm gonna wait. I'm gonna do a roll call. Ready? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have one member remote, so I'm just gonna do a roll call to call the meeting to order. Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kathy, yes?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Okay, so we call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Okay. Okay, first up on the agenda is public comment. I'm not aware of any public comment tonight. Okay. So, and the next up would be department comment. And I'm not aware of any department comment tonight. Okay. Next category is our discussion and possible vote. I'm just gonna run through this, just six items on that. We have the roadway name corrections, and our town clerk will be leading us through that. We have item number two is asking the board to review and make comment if it wishes on the 441 Main Street special permit and site plan review application. Number three, trash and recycling update, which I will take care of. Number four, the Whittier N E C C shared campus model working group update, and Jason will chair on that. Number five is approve and ratify the contract for the fire chief. And number six is the fiscal year 2026 budget update, and that will be led by our town administrator. So, on to item one, the roadway name correction. Has everybody had time to read through the names of the roads that are being corrected? Okay, and our town clerk is gonna talk us through it. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
We met a couple of weeks ago, and we first started to discuss, and I asked you for consideration and vote. You wanted me to send out a letter to the roadways in question, which we did. There were 71 letters that were sent out. I don't know if the board received any responses, or if Rebecca did. You were both on that as contacts.
I did not see a response in my email. Did any other member? No.
It was just your email, Kathy?
Oh, just mine, okay. I did not see anything.
Okay. All right, so we did get a few calls. All of them were for River Pines, and the people that called already used the address drive, so it would not affect them at all.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, so right now we have one, two, three, five road name changes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we would vote on changing Knox, from Knox Street to Knox Avenue, and from Merritt Street to Merritt Avenue, from River Pines Road to River Pines Drive, and my favorite, Stevenson Way, spelt with the P H, to Stevenson Way, spelt S T E V E N S O N, Way. And Wood Avenue changing to Woods Avenue, with an S on the end of it. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then you skipped Pinio.
I did.
Pinio Drive to Pinio Ave. It was before River Pines.
Oh, okay, that one is also in the list? I didn't see that one. Okay. So, Pinio Avenue to Pinio Drive is, so that makes one, two, three, six of them then? Six changes? I had counted five, that's all. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we only sent out the letter to five.
So...
This one doesn't need, we have to talk to the treasurer and the assessor. Pardon me. That would be a change on their software program.
Okay, so not Pinio.
Not for them.
Okay. So then again, the new names are going to be Knox Street to Knox Avenue. That's one change. Merritt Street to Merritt Avenue. River Pines Road to River Pines Drive. Stevenson Way with a P H to Stevenson Way with a S T E V E N S O N. And Wood Avenue to Woods with an S Avenue. Make a motion to make these changes?
I'll make a motion to accept those, all of them. Knox, Knox Avenue, River Pines Drive, Merritt Avenue, Stevenson Way, spelt with a S T E V, Woods Avenue. And I think that's it.
Second? Any further discussion? There being none, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Okay. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy, yes? Mark?
Yes.
And Ed, yes? Okay, so it's unanimous?
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to do that.
You're welcome. And if I can just remind everybody that papers are now available for nomination, nomination papers are now available for people to pick up for seats for the election in May. We have not had a lot of people show up to take out papers, so hopefully there are still two seats available for the assessors. There's one seat for the cemetery, one seat for the Board of Health, Housing Authority, someone took out papers. Library, there are three seats, two people have taken out papers. Light Commission, there's a seat available. Moderator, someone's taken out papers. School Committee, there's one seat available, and no one's taken out papers. Selectmen, two people have taken out papers. And Town Clerk, two people have taken out papers. And then, sorry, the Water Department, one seat available, and no one has taken out papers.
And what is the last date that people can take out papers?
Oh, you would have to ask. I didn't write it down. I think it's March 12th or 13th, so...
March? March, yeah, the first, yeah. From the beginning of March.
And then they have to return them right away, so it doesn't give them much time. It's a Thursday to a Tuesday.
Okay. But they can still get them off in February? Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the 441 Main Street special permit and site plan review application. This is on our agenda for us to review, and if we wish to make comment to the planning board, we can. Has everybody had time to review it? I'll just do a roll call for comments. Becky, do you have any comments for the planning board?
I don't. I looked through it. It looked like the building that they were putting up was just gonna house equipment that's already there. So, when they mentioned that, for aesthetics, everything else seemed in order. Nothing seemed concerning to me when I looked at it.
Thank you. Jason?
No comments.
Yes, same as myself. I looked at it, it looked like they're just adding a building. They're not changing the roadway in or roadway out. And the entrance to the building will face away from Warf Avenue, which is good. Mark?
Nothing.
Ed?
No, I'm all for, I'm all for it.
Okay. So, we don't need to vote on it? We just needed to say if we wanted to make comments? So, we have no comment? Thank you. Okay. Next up is trash and recycling update, and that's from me. So, we are meeting again on February the 10th, which is a Monday. Now I know that. And are we gonna be able to use the middle room, do you think, if there are more people at the meeting? Have you checked to see, is February 10th, is the middle room available at 6 o'clock, or...
So, there's a community preservation committee meeting scheduled for that evening, but it does not start until 7:30. So, if the meeting will be over by 7:30, then the room is available. If it will not end before 7:30, then the room will not be available.
We tend to be able to keep it to an hour, so I think we'll be all right. Okay. We'll go for it. Jan's here. You agree? Yes. Okay, so, to this meeting... Yes, well, I'm... We can move to the back, well, we can, can we just move to the back conference room if we need to continue meeting, or is that not acceptable?
It's not entirely proper. When you advertise a meeting, you're supposed to set like a specific location, so that if somebody were to come in, they might sit in on the CPC application, a CPC meeting, instead of being in the trash and recycling meeting, and it might cause...
All right, well, yeah, we don't, so then why don't we post, are we, I'm not sure which room we posted for now. Are we posted for the back room or for this room?
I would have to double check.
I put an "or" in there. So, I might have to go in and redo that? I have time.
Yes, you do have the 48 hours' time.
Okay.
And you can make the adjustment.
Okay, so I think we'll just post for the back room. We'll make it work. Okay. All right. Appreciate that. So, at that meeting, I would expect that we'll have a draft of a report as to what we've looked at, the history of rubbish removal in this town. We've been gathering data on the overrides that have come and gone, the ones that have passed, the ones that have failed. I've gathered, the state has an enormous database. I've been going to that and pulling out data for our surrounding towns, what they're doing, what their tonnage is, what our tonnage is. And I do still have a question in before the state to Brian Walsh whether we can go with the two 35-gallon carts per household unless somebody says that they want the, just the one, and they wanna pay a lower fee. But we're checking on that, and to see if we would still qualify as a pay-as-you-throw program. I'm hopeful that we will, because it maybe will get some grant money to help with the purchase of the carts. It's confusing to me what, what we can get a grant for and what we can't. It seems like maybe the recycling carts we can, and maybe not the trash carts, but the issue of manual trash pickup is kind of a moot issue now. It appears that you need to be prepared to go out for proposals on automated pickup, or else there will be companies that won't even bother to submit a proposal. So, I don't feel that we have a choice. We do have a choice on the cart sizes, cart costs, how many carts, that thing, but everybody is moving towards the automated pickup. So, the most competitive bids are gonna be if you can provide the carts, so they can do an automated pickup. But beyond that, I think that everybody, we need to bring together information about the cost of recycling, the market cost, how it works. I think there's just a lot for people to become educated on. We know the pickup cost, that's an easy cost, but the tonnage cost and the recycling cost are more complex. And we need to, in our report, we're gonna probably have to identify the various types of recycling costs that are out there. We have the one that we have from Waste Management, which is we get 50% of the blended cost when it's in the black. That's not the same in other contracts. So, there's, there's other types of recycling contracts that can be looked at. So, it's not just choose this one, choose that one. It's not that simple. And our town administrator has uncovered a lot of language with respect to the contamination cost, which we are being charged, which I wasn't aware. It's kinda buried in the table. So, we are being assessed a 10% contamination charge on the recycling, correct? Whether or not it's contaminated, we don't, we have no way of knowing. We'd have to ask for an audit. So, that may become part of the next proposal as well, because it all adds up, and it costs us a lot of money. The past chart that I just put together, that it will be part of this report, I thought was really interesting. It shows that in, back in like 10 years ago, trash was maybe the cost of rubbish as part of our whole, like, town departments budget was maybe 12 or so percent, and it's now rising to about 20%. So, it is taking up funds that could go to our town departments. You know, it's basically, you know, bleeding the funds over to trash instead of to services like public safety, highways, human services. All those have been going actually down, believe it or not, compared to rubbish. So, I think that a lot of public education has to go out in front of all of these choices, so that it's very, very clear what's at stake here, because I think it's a big deal that we make a really wise decision. And I'm glad that we have another year on the current contract if we need it. We will be at our meeting, hopefully deciding on a March date for our public information session as well. But for now, if people are planning to come down and visit with us, we, we will be meeting on the 10th. We will be working on our report, so it won't be as open a forum, but we will try to accommodate questions when we can. Okay. And now it's item four, Whittier. So, I am employed as a teacher at Whittier Vocational Technical High School, so I always recuse myself from these discussions. I'm gonna just kinda go off to the side during the discussion and not participate.
You're on.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, enjoy.
I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to look in their packet at the slideshow, but I was more interested in just going over the page 13. It gives you a little bit of a breakdown of the four options and what they anticipate for what Whittier and Northern Essex Community College is gonna look like in the future. It could be just two schools separate with one, on one campus. Two schools with shared spaces and services. Two schools with one common identity and shared space and services, or a fully integrated model, school model. When they talked about it, they said they were leaning between the two in the middle, 'cause that made the most amount of sense. There's a couple of things I did learn while I was there. One is the feasibility study that's gonna be required is not gonna be funded unless it's funded by the towns. And they're estimating it's gonna be $2.5 million. How that gets broken up or how it gets funded, they haven't talked about yet. Hopefully, they'll have a little bit more insight on that in our next meeting. I also learned that the district's eligibility period is from August 1st to 2025. That's when it begins. And it's not gonna begin if less the towns all agree to pay for the feasibility study. It's not gonna begin if we don't agree to amend the existing vocational, regional school district agreement, which is an important piece that has been a bit contentious amongst the 11 towns. So, that's, that's something big that everybody has to, to talk about. It's also not gonna begin if we don't have the support of the district. The changes in the agreement that have to take place in terms of the movement of the school itself to a different location that's outside the five miles. So, just some of the things that they talked about. And that's really all I had. Unless Rebecca would like to add anything.
Uh, Jason?
Yes.
Do they still, still have the school committee? Same membership?
In terms of the building committee?
No, in terms of the school itself.
For the school itself, yes. That's all selected by the school committees for, from each of the towns.
And how about the building committee?
Building committee hasn't been reformed yet, as far as I know.
And what, what do they, have they discussed, how, how many members? How would it be formed?
They didn't get into details, but I do believe it'll be the same as last time, because that's the way it's dictated in the agreement, 'cause the agreement hasn't been changed.
And do they have, do they have enough room over at Northern Essex to accommodate? Or would they have to put up a few new buildings?
Well, they'll have to put up new building, for sure. The size of the building, the extensive of the building, that's all a discussion, depending on what they decide on, how integrated it's gonna be. And that's...
Could be a shared use of athletic facilities?
Could be shared use of athletic facilities. I know Whittier is really pushing on keeping their own field.
Well, I don't think Northern Essex has a football field.
Well, that'll be good for them.
So, Whittier is looking at keeping all of their, all their fields?
As far as I know, they only talked about the football field.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm sure they would be remiss if they didn't wanna have all their fields, because they, they do wanna look out, give their students the best opportunities that are available. So...
I don't have any other questions.
Would you, Mark?
Hello?
Becky?
Well, talking about the fields a little bit, so, I know they just redid their football field. So, would they leave that as like the Whittier sports complex, I guess? Is that...
They, they did do just some discussion about what they plan on doing with the building, whether or not they plan on trying to make it profitable to cut down on the cost of the new building, what that looks like. They really didn't have a clue. And a lot of it's gonna depend on how much of the capital costs that they have to put into the building and the facilities to keep it going until this process takes place, 'cause that'll dictate what they can and can't do with the building.
And then, when the price was brought up for the assessment, the feasibility study, how was the, I guess, the temperature of the room with that with the other towns?
It was really hard to gauge, because there was so many people there from Whittier, and you didn't see a lot of the representation from the other towns. None of the other towns really spoke up about it. Everybody was relatively quiet.
Okay. Okay. Just curious about that.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Jason, have they, have they looked into the parking? Northern Essex seems to be pretty well tapped out as far as their parking looks.
I think a lot of that's gonna come into the feasibility study when they do that. I know from what they were saying, Northern Essex has more than enough acreage to add to the campus. In fact, they're also talking about adding dorms, housing, and other things, so... They have, I forget in terms of the quantity of the acres, but they, they said somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 acres that they have to work with. So, I mean, I don't think that would be an issue if they designed it properly. And if they do the feasibility study like the way they should, I think they'll have a good idea of what they'll need for parking and buildings and...
Well, I know Northern Essex is known throughout the country for their studies with deaf students, the nursing program, and I forget the other one. So, the, the people that are there that are going to the nursing program, they're from all over the country, and they, obviously, they don't have any dormitories, so they're, they're living in apartments in the area, at least they have in the past.
Yeah, that could definitely be a reason why they're looking into it.
Could be.
I know that a merger like this, or a joint venture, is something relatively new to Massachusetts, but there are some other, other communities that have done it across the country, more so, I guess, in Europe, from what they were saying, because it's been very successful. I think of it more like a, when, when I grew up in the, in the high school era, it was considered a prep school, just a private school you went to to prepare you for college. And a lot of times, you took college courses. I know they talked about the students at Whittier now having opportunities to go to early college classes, and some of them are graduating with an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same time, or just with a year away from a associate's degree. So, it's really given them a great opportunity to, that they don't necessarily have in other schools. I know Bantucket has been doing a lot of that as well, speaking with Dr. B. So, I think it's a great opportunity.
Sure.
Jason, one more question for you. Oh, sorry. For, as far as the enrollment goes, 'cause I know that can be, I know that has a lot to do with the agreement, but was there any talk about opening up to possibly more students? Because, you know, based on how it's being presented, it seems very appealing, and more students may wanna be interested in that?
There's a waiting list now. I would, I would definitely wanna have more students, student eligibility available. Maureen did say that the SBA limited it to 1,400. Whether or not that's the case going forward, I don't know what they did with the last time around.
Okay.
So, that may change. But I definitely, I'm definitely for it, in terms of...
Yeah, absolutely.
...most students available.
Thank you, Jason. I think I can speak on behalf of the town for spearheading this amazing project. Joe Demore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. The $2.1 million feasibility study, that has to be split up as to who pays for it among the towns. You made that clear. That has to happen by August?
The decision on how it's gonna be paid has to happen before August. I believe they cut off, it was actually in July.
Okay. And the regional agreement needs to be modified largely because of the change of address, but I also know that there's also been some contentious debate in the last several months, that some towns wanna materially change it, for example, because they feel that they wanna spend less because they don't send as many kids. So, those are two huge projects. Is the working committee actually working on those? Or is that two separate teams doing that?
It's been two separate teams that are trying to focus on that. I know Haverhill has shut down most of the conversations up to this point, just because the way the agreement's written now, they send 68% of the students there currently, and they only are responsible for 48% of the capital expenses. So, if that held true for moving forward with a new school, that would seem like a big savings for Haverhill. But what I've learned through the process is most of the time, they use a school formula, which we're familiar with, speaking about in terms of Bantucket. And so, and once you figure in the wealth factor, I don't think there would be much difference in terms of what Haverhill would be paying now versus then, or some of the other towns that don't send as many students. So, I know that Maya Grove has an attorney that specializes in regional agreements and gave us all a lot of great information. And also Maya Reardon, his attorney was also present at some of the meetings, and they spoke on the subject, so...
So, you got the sense that they feel that they need to get this done by July?
Yes. Well, they have to. If they don't, then nothing's gonna move forward, because we're gonna lose the eligibility.
So, and I appreciate it. Last question real quick. When we turn down building a new school, normally, the state would maybe, we'd be lucky to come back years from now to be reconsidered. So, it's amazing that a year later, we're being reconsidered, but we've gotta get our ducks in order by August. If we don't get our ducks in order, do you have any idea when that window closes? When you say we gotta be ready by August? If we don't have our stuff together, they're gonna shut us down, what?
August 1st.
Oh, okay.
2025, that's it. We lose our eligibility, and then it'll be, I think, a big part of the reason why...
Oh, so we're either ready or we're dead?
Yeah. I think a big part of the reason...
That's easy.
...why that we had the eligibility to begin with is because they were talking about this merger. When you look at the cost of schools coming forward, I mean, the, the cost of Whittier was, I believe, 446,000, 446 million. It was a, a big pill for a lot of people to swallow. But a lot of those costs were calculated and set starting five years ago, and those things would be held at those prices. Lexington just got a, this... Lexington just got a, their school, and it's going to be 662 million for a regular high school without all the workshops, without all the equipment for them. So the way that the prices have continued to grow is, is just absurd, in my opinion, but it is the price.
And could I?
Thank you, I appreciate it, Jason.
For a point of clarification, the five-mile radius, the school still does fall in, under the agreement. The agreement per the comments from the MSBA just needs to be agreed that they would be willing, all 11-member communities would be willing to amend the regional agreement. They're not asking for the amendments of the regional agreement, such an act like.
I thought we already gave them that letter. Was it just because it was the exception of a?
That was the beginning. So this is a very lengthy process. We're talking about another four to five years before, and if you would ever see any potential construction. The project eligibility, if we remember from Penticat, is just the initial phase where they invite you to have a conversation, then you have to go forward with the design and getting into the nitty-gritty details, as Select Board Member Watson had mentioned, with the parking and the building location and all that other stuff. So this is just the initial phase. But the state wants a commitment from the district that they are, one, going to fund the feasibility study, two, that they are going to look forward to amending the agreement, and, three, that they'll make sure that they have all of that in progress by that deadline so that they can get into the next phase, which then takes us into more of a robust conversation as to what we would get. But to have the actual amendment, amendments to the agreement wouldn't be by July or August. It's just that we would be committed to entertaining those discussions.
Makes it a little bit easier. But we'll see. Anything else? Becky?
No, nope. Thank you.
Nope, one more sec.
You all set, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? All right. Then I'll turn it back over to Kathy.
All right. So, next, oh, is to approve and ratify the contract for our fire chief. Okay, so, the board met, I think, if you were here, you know, we went into executive session at the end of our last meeting, and we did approve a new contract with our fire chief, and he agreed to accept it, which is good, too. I'm just scrolling down to see, I wanted to do, I could ask the highlights from our town administrator, but we should be able to do that, just a second. A lot of Whittier's slides here. Okay. Oh, okay, here we are. So, this contract would start on July 1st of 2025, and, town administrator, can you fill me, how many years are we doing on this contract? Is it three years?
Three-year contract.
It's a three-year contract. We are making significant, well, not significant, we're making wage adjustments, which will bring our fire chief's salary, I will say, more in alignment with area fire departments. It's still not really on par, but it brings it up closer. So, because that is a problem for us, that we still are kind of low on that salary. So, we didn't go with the typical, you know, 3% rate as we were trying to bring this, this chief's position into alignment so that it would be a competitive salary among the towns around us. So in fiscal 2026, which is the year coming up, the salary would be set at $100,415. And for fiscal 2027, it would go to $107,710. And for 2028, it would go to $115,000. I don't have the chart in front of me that our town administrator shared to us, so maybe you could comment as to where are we at the end of this contract relative to the towns that kind of are our peers?
So a lot of the member communities that we look for in terms of comparable salaries and positions in departments, being that of a hybrid department with some on-call as well as full-time career firefighters, were Merrimack, Georgetown, and Rowley. And as part of that review, we found that the chief was severely underpaid from all of those communities, and therefore, the current chiefs are at the year number two of what we proposed for the fire chief, which was at about $107,000. So by the end of the contract that we had provided, he will still be under what his counterparts are being paid in both, in all of Merrimack, Georgetown, and Rowley, because all of those chiefs will be up to renegotiating, and their base salary is what he would be making at year number two. So it's a valid attempt to try and get the position as far along as we possibly could, given the constraints within our budget and the service needs that we have for the town.
Thank you. And one comment that I would put out there is that, and I, we shared this with our fire chief, too, that we have a really great team working here in Groveland right now. Our public safety, our, our fire chief and our police chief work together seamlessly. Our town administrator coordinates with our fire chief and our police chief seamlessly, and they are all coordinating with our highway department through our project and programs manager. I probably said that backwards, but I'm trying to get the name down. So, all of these higher-level positions in our town, at this point, are working in an amazing team fashion that we really haven't seen before. And that's another good reason to want to keep this model and, and keep this going and bring our, our salaries in alignment. So, that's, there's nothing else changing in the contract other than the salary, and trying to bring it more in alignment with the area towns so that it is more competitive. So, at this point, we need to vote to ratify. Okay, so I need a motion to ratify the contract, and it will be a roll call vote, because we have one member on Zoom.
I'll make a motion. We ratify the fire chief's contract from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2028?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Becky?
No.
Jason?
No.
No further discussion.
Mark?
Nope.
Ed?
Nope.
Okay. And from all of us, thank you to the fire chief for all your service thus far. We look forward to working with you tomorrow. So I'll call for the vote. Yes?
Nothing.
Oh, okay. All in favor, Becky?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy, yes?
Yes.
Mark? Ed?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Okay, and next, I think we're up to town administrator, isn't it?
Appointment.
No, 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 no. No, fiscal, I almost did it again, but I caught myself. Thank you. Fiscal year 2026 budget update from our town administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just be brief. As you can see in your packet, the governor has released her budget, so we do have the cherry sheet with those preliminary numbers. The increase from last fiscal year is about $1,277,051, so about a $39,000 increase from last fiscal year. And then we're also looking at total assessment charges that have increased from $93,541 in fiscal year 2025 to $99,156,000. So we're looking at another increase of $5,615. And mind you, those are the assessments, but the increase in the revenue portion will make up for those increases in the assessment. The unrestricted general aid was increased by 2.2%, which aligns with the state revenue forecast, but obviously, it's not a huge increase for the town. Some of the initial figures that we had brought forward before the board, we had mentioned that we had received our assessment for our retirement. We had also discussed that we had not seen the final numbers come through for the GIC, and we also discussed the fact that we're waiting for the school districts to come forward with their assessments. So from my understanding, the school committee for the Penticat Regional School District is scheduled to meet tomorrow. At tomorrow, they should be discussing the budget, and we will have that number. For our preliminary budget, I did put in a 3% increase over last fiscal year for the assessment for the Penticat Regional School, which is our highest assessment, and we would be looking at $11.9 million that would go towards the school. So if you look at what we had for fiscal year '25, that would be about a $347,000 increase. And to put that into perspective, when we're talking about our revenue, looking at our prior year levy and our new growth, we're really only looking at increasing the budget about $500,000. So about $347,000 of that would be going towards the school automatically if, in fact, they move forward with a 3% increase for next fiscal year. Until they release that number, we're only working with our estimates, but if they do go beyond that, we will be looking at a potential override situation. The other numbers that we're still waiting on as well is from the Whittier Vocational School. We do have two new students that will be attending, so that will increase. And again, they need to give us some understanding of their Chapter 70 monies that have come through and how that impacts their revenue and what they need to put forward for our per pupil and our enrollment. Otherwise, we're still kind of in the preliminary phase for our expenditures. All of the departments have submitted their requests. They're currently going before the finance board and discussing those requests. Again, we're still waiting for some of those final numbers from the GIC. Otherwise, a lot of our other items, like I said, the retirement, as well as property casualty, and some of those items have come back, so we've been able to lock in those numbers. Another big change with this year's budget that you'll see is that we are going to be putting forward an effort to consolidate our technology and our utilities line. Currently, as it sits, most departments have their own utilities and technology line items. So if, for example, the building commissioner has Permitlink, it's a software system that we use for filing building, electrical, plumbing permits, as well as just, you're going to be submitting a plan to the planning board, and you had a subdivision, they would apply for their permit through Permitlink, so that then gets kicked back to all the other departments that would need to sign off on those permits. So it is a, a software that multiple departments are utilizing. So to put that under an umbrella of the technology budget makes a lot more sense than having individual departments with very small expenditure line items such as $2,000, $3,000, to then have this $50,000 expenditure, which is kind of really outside of their control. It also helps us with our procurement aspect, because then when we can bundle services and we can put it towards, forward as a town, it makes it so that we can get better pricing. So the same falls true with some of the other departments, such as the clerk. She has some election software data, and to have that in her small budget where it fluctuates, it just doesn't make any sense. So we're trying to take the monies that were allocated in those budgets and move them into the technology line item, and then moving forward, they will live in the technology line item. And the same is what we're trying to do for the utilities budget, especially when we talk about cell phones. So if you're a town employee and you get a cellphone because the COA gives you a cellphone or the building department gives you a cellphone, it doesn't go through the proper course from onboarding procedures. So since those items are paid for with taxpayer dollars, we should make sure that we know what phone we have, we should make sure we know who's been assigned that phone, we should have an umbrella of an account that we have that makes sure that we know exactly what equipment is out there. And again, it also, from a procurement aspect, gives us an opportunity to bundle services. So if we have five phones, they'll give you a phone for free and an extra line kind of thing. So it makes it easier to control. So those are two items in the budget that when you receive that, you're going to say, well, why is the utilities budget increasing substantially, or why is the technology budget increasing substantially? Those are the reasons. But again, all of the monies that's been allocated for those from the individual department budgets have been moved as well. So you're really seeing a net zero effect, but you will see a larger increase. So until we get the final numbers from the school side as well as the GIC, we do not have a final budget, but we are hoping to get you a budget to present at your next meeting so that you will have that information. So as soon as I know, you will know.
Thank you. The school committee has to have a public hearing on the budget. That is in March?
Correct. I believe that they just sent out the email today, and they will be inviting the, the board and the finance committee to attend the meeting on February 25th, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM at the school to discuss the budget.
Okay.
I believe the meeting that's being held tomorrow is just to present the budget.
Right. Understood. Do you have any questions? Yes, Ed?
This line item on here, that the governor's local aid proposal, regional transit, $54,000 plus, is that for the free bus that comes across the bridge?
So it would be for the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority? Yes, so there's a portion of the assessment charges that go towards that for us.
So we're receiving $1,000 a week, about, for the bus to come across the, the bridge into Groveland?
As well as the ring and ride services, which is free of charge for anyone who's to call MEVA and schedule a ride for transport. So any of the services provided by the Regional Transit Authority is charged to the community, whereas if you were an MBTA community, you would be charged for the train and the commuter rail.
Okay.
Any further questions? No? No? Okay, there being none, are you ready? We're going to move on for appointments. So we have a, a request to appoint Christopher Sanborn of Salem Street as an alternate member of the finance board effective February 3rd, 2025, until June 30th, 2025. And our packet included a letter with Christopher's background, very extensive budget background, impressive. We need a motion to appoint.
I'll make a motion. We pre-appoint Chris Sanborn, Salem Street, alternate member of the finance board effective February 3rd, 2025, to June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy, yes? Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
It's unanimous, thank you. Next, we have a request to appoint Brian Canizaro of Groveland Commonsway as a member of the finance board effective February 3rd, 2025, until June 30th, 2025. I believe we also have a letter.
Brian is here, maybe he wants to.
He is here? I thought, yeah, it might be you. Would you like to come up to the microphone? Good evening.
Oh, he's leaving. Oh, no, he's coming back.
Nah.
You heard him, I heard he scared him?
Nah, doesn't scare easy.
Well, thank you. I just have a brief statement I'd like to read if.
Of course.
I'm allowed to.
Why don't you state your name?
Yep, yep, I will. My name is Brian Canizaro. I'm from 27 Groveland Commonsway, just next door. I just have a brief statement. Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Select Board to allow me to speak on my behalf to become a member of the finance board. As such, I pledge in maintaining the fiscal health and stability of the town of Groveland for the benefit of the residents while maintaining my fiduciary responsibilities, following all parliamentary procedures set forth by the town in open-meeting town laws. So, thank you for the opportunity and for the consideration.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve Brian Canizaro, a member of the finance board, effective February 3rd, 2025, till June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. Becky?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy, yes?
Yes.
Mark? Ed? Yes. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Okay. Next, I have a request to appoint James Dowling of Valley Farm Road as a constable effective February 3rd, 2025, until December 31st, 2028. That's unusual. Is that, usually we do to the end of the fiscal year, but this time you just? So it's a, where he's filling out a term of somebody else's term?
So that he's not looking to be a constable here in Groveland? The process in which to become a constable is to. The process in which to become a constable is to have the police chief review the application and sign off on the application, and then for it to go to the Select Board in that community, in which case they would be appointed.
It says, are we appointing James Dowling of Valley Farm Road as a constable? Is he being a constable in our town?
I, from his application, it looks like he's looking to be a constable in a different community. So, the way that you're appointed as a constable is to have both the entities and the role serving in the town and the jurisdiction in which you wish to serve.
Oh, okay. The term, the term of the appointment rolls all the way through two other fiscal years?
December 31st, two thousand twenty-eight, correct.
So, is he fulfilling the term of somebody who stepped down in another town, probably, or something like that?
I believe it's the calendar year.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, yeah, that would make more sense. Okay. So, we do vote, though, to appoint?
Correct. The police chief has signed off on the application in your packet, and now it goes to the Select Board.
Okay, so can we get a motion on the floor in a second, and we'll see if there's any discussion?
Make a motion. We appoint James Dowling of Valley Farm Road as a constable effective February 3rd, two thousand twenty-five, to December 31st, two thousand twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's open for discussion. Becky, questions, concerns? None? Jason?
No.
I have none. Mark? Ed?
No.
Okay, then I'll call for the vote. Ed? Call for the vote. Yes or no? Roll call vote?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have any questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I changed gears on you. Roll call vote. Ed, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we also have approval of the minutes for December 23rd, two thousand twenty-four, Select Board meeting minutes. If you had a chance to review those.
They look to be in order. A move for passage.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the roll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
Jason?
I abstained. I was absent.
Okay, Kathy, yes?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Ed, yes. One abstention, Jason, who is not present at the meeting. So, for, in favor, one abstention. Next is older unfinished business. I'm not aware of any. Okay. Other items not reasonably anticipated? Again, I wasn't, nobody raised a concern, okay? And then we're up to Town Administrator's time.
So, I wanted to keep the Board apprised of some developments in terms of town meeting. So, we do have a couple of zoning and general bylaw changes that we'll be putting forward this year. So, there's the battery energy storage system. There's some clerical errors that were a part of the bylaw that we recently passed, I believe, last year. Then, we also need to make some updates to our floodplain overlay district to update the current FEMA maps, and also to change the permitting authority from the Planning Board to the Floodplanes Administrator. There is a proposal to increase the shared parking facilities in the radius in which you're allowed to consider as available parking for those areas in Elm Square. There's also going to be the need to update the accessory apartments to be compliant with the new Massachusetts general law. We also need to be updating the zoning or putting forward zoning for the MBTA 3A zoning that would be a requirement under the state regulations. And then we'll be looking to make the correction that we tried to make last year, but we did not follow the proper process, to change Board of Selectmen to Select Board as part of the zoning bylaw, which has already been done as part of the general bylaw and voted on at town meeting. For the general bylaws, we have the Town Administrator bylaw. I just received the draft from Council in regards to some of the comments that the Select Board had, so I should be bringing that forward to the Board shortly. There is the snow removal bylaw that we will be putting forward. We do have a bylaw in regards to snow being placed out on the roadway, but we do not have a bylaw that dictates whether or not you can throw snow on the sidewalk. And we do have the ability under Massachusetts general law to enforce such, so we will be putting that forward. There's also a need to update the illicit discharge bylaw. The COA had been attempting to make some changes to their bylaw. They had run into some challenges the last town meeting. They have since worked with the working group that was assigned by both the Select Board as well as the Finance Board, and have come to some amendments that would be looked upon more favorably by both or to be reviewed by both to see whether or not they would be acceptable. And then there is the driveway bylaw that we'll be looking to put forward. And then there will also be two street acceptances. One would be Billis Way, and the other would be Katy Lane. And again, that's all contingent upon whether or not the proper information is submitted, as well as the proper process for the Planning Board review. And so, that leads to my next update is with the housing workshop recap. I know two, excuse me, three of the Select Board members were present at that meeting. But for the record, we did hold a meeting this past Thursday for the 3A MBTA housing, as well as just housing here in Groveland. We discussed some of the overlay district sites that would be proposed as part of the state compliance requirements. I think one of the biggest takeaways, again, is to understand that this process is about zoning. It's not a construction of new housing that's being put forward. It's the process of putting together an overlay district where property owners have the choice as to whether or not they would like to construct per the new bylaw, or whether or not they would like to leave things as it is. It does not force property owners to make any changes. It is just zoning that allows properties to move forward. And as part of this process, and what we discussed on Thursday, is that this is just to get a general understanding of which area and which zone they would like to move forward with. The consultant will be coming back with zoning that will allow for the community to take a closer look at what is being allowed and how that looks, and whether or not they feel as though it suits the character of the community. So, there is still more of an opportunity to weigh in on the zoning, as well as the design guidelines that would be a part of that discussion. So, the next step is for the consultant to refine some of the feedback that they heard at their meeting and to provide some actual zoning that can be reviewed by the Planning Board. For any individuals who are unable to attend, you're able to go on to the project website and to submit any comments and/or questions. You can also reach out to me directly, and I'd be happy to answer them. Once they get their zoning in play, they will again go before the Planning Board. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing. They will review, and then we will go forward with the annual town meeting process on April 28th. For project requests and residential concerns, none were received. For field use permits, we issued the special event permit for two thousand twenty-five-dash-SP2, which is the Alzheimer's Association, to use Elm Park for the Ride to End ALZ New England. This will be on June 7th, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. This will be their fourth year seeking a permit for this event. Some important upcoming dates, the Planning Board is actually meeting tomorrow, February 4th. The Trash and Recycling Committee is going to be meeting on February 10th. The Community Preservation Committee is also meeting on February 10th. Town Hall will be closed on President's Day on February 17th. The school budget presentation will be on Tuesday, the 24th, excuse me, 25th, at 6:00 PM. I did just receive that email today, and we'll be forwarding that all to you. And then again, to remind everyone, that town meeting is on April 28th. For grants, we were successful with our application for the Johnson's Creek Dam, so this will aid in our efforts to study the feasibility of removing the dam. So, we are very excited about that opportunity to couple that funding source with DER, as well as the Dams and Seawall Grant. We've also been making efforts to get this project on the Transportation Improvement Program, which would help with the construction funding. So, the further along we can get this from a design and permitting phase, the more likely that there will be funding available to construct and/or remove, deconstruct, repair, or whatever process we want to move forward with that is in the best interest of the community. For procurement, the roadway resurfacing contract bids are due this Thursday, or excuse me, next Thursday, February 13th. The HVAC installation in the server room has been complete. For our technical review conferences, we did not have any conferences that were held. For community preservation, as reported at the last meeting, there were four applications received, and one for affordable housing and repair program, the Groveland Congregational Church clock and bell restoration, to save our last mill building, and trail enhancement project. The committee is meeting again on Monday, February 10th, to discuss these applications. And then I have a list of the meetings, events, and seminars that I've attended the last two weeks, if the Board would like to get any additional information.
No, but are you, do you find that you're meeting every single night of the week? Or do you get to go home sometimes?
There's some weeks where there's a lot of meetings.
Yes.
This week, it's the Select Board and the Planning Board and the Finance Board.
All right. I feel like that's something the Board should think about, see what we can do about that. It's a lot of meetings, a lot of nights out. Does anybody else have any other questions on that? That's a pretty busy agenda. Thank you for that. It's now time for Select Board time and reports. Becky, have anything to add?
I have nothing. Just thank you for accommodating me virtually today.
Of course.
That's it.
And Jason?
I'm good this week.
Mark?
I just want to say thanks to the Highway Department. I mean, I know they're shorthanded, and they're doing their best to keep the roads clean and safe, so just a quick little shout-out to them.
Yeah, I agree with Mark. They did their usual great job.
Yes. I just wanted to take a minute for myself, for my family, to say thank you to everybody in Groveland who helped us so much 12 years ago when our daughter Jackie died. This is the anniversary, 12 years, and we weren't in a position to speak publicly back then, but I know the Highway Department was out clearing the snow so we could have services. I know the Police Department did everything they could for us, coordinating with Australia to bring her home, find out what they could for us. I know the firefighters were there, carried her casket for us. And I know all the kind people in Groveland who brought us casseroles and sent us cards. And I just wanted to say again, for myself, my husband Michael, my son Mikey, and my son Andrew, thank you. We really appreciated all that. We have correspondence, resignation of Brady Paolino, Palino? As a full-time firefighter EMT, and appointment of Nicholas Lupoli of Main Street as an on-call firefighter. And the next scheduled meeting of the Select Board will be Tuesday, February 18th, as of the President's Day, at 6:30 PM. We're ready to adjourn. I'll do the roll call. Start with you, Becky. Oh, make a motion, please.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion. We close our meeting at, is it 7:30, 2?
Motion adjourn.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm still trying to read the clock.
I'll second that.
The big hands on the, very, second. Okay, Becky? Motion?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.